This meeting is a public session of the Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. Ms. Marina Salvatore, go into place. And also remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous start? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We'd like to do one more song before the school board meeting continues. A really quick story. Our group has had an amazing opportunity to be part of what's called the Macy's Acapella Challenge where our group had to come up with an arrangement and video of the Jackson Five hit "I Want You Back." And we were up against hundreds and hundreds of other schools, middle schools, high schools, and colleges. The winning groups would receive each $25,000. It was a very big deal towards our busy program. So we had a wonderful time today. As a matter of fact, Manda Cruz is over here. Manda was the one responsible for putting together the entire video. And with the editing and the directing and everything, we had a lot of fun. It was really an learning experience for us. So we'd like to propose for you, it's really short, it's about a minute and forty-nine seconds. So here's our version of "I Want You Back."
Da-da-da, 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 da-da-da. Oh, 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 just one more time. I want you back. Give me one more chance to show you that I love you. Won't you let me in your heart? Oh, darling, how could I know to let you go, baby? Oh, see you, see you. I want you back. I had you tell myself I didn't want you around. Pretty faces always make a stand out in the crowd. Someone picked you from the bunch, but that was all they took. Now it's much too easy to lose control. Let me tell you now, oh, baby, give me one more chance to show you that I love you. Won't you let me in your heart? Oh, darling, how could I know to let you go, baby? Oh, see you, see you. I want you back. Give me one more chance.
Thank you, Mr. Axel. Really well done. Good-looking group. Madam Secretary, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Agumson?
Here.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Violet?
Here.
Dr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grubbs?
President.
Mrs. McCassey?
Here.
Mrs. Sexton?
Mrs. Sexton is ill this evening, as is our superintendent. Sitting in tonight, Dr. Lambert.
And Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
All right, Ms. McCarthy? It's been a while since last time. The group looks a little bit different.
A little bit. Happy New Year, everyone. And Council Rock North is very happy to be back here for the new year. I present to you Samantha Rank, who may look a little familiar to you, except now she is a 12th grader. We have Hadley Grundman, who is an 11th grader. Finn Thompson, who is now a 10th grader. And new to our team is Jake Cohen, our 9th grade representative, and also Kristin Fern, who is our MBIT representative. Samantha, you may begin.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Rank, and I am the senior class representative for the Student Advisory Board. During the first month and a half of school, the senior class has already begun planning for the Disney trip. The first payment was due a few weeks ago, and the next payment is in November. There are only 180 days more, 180 more days until the trip, but hey, who's counting? On another note, the Student Executive Board held their first event last night, Blue and White Night, which raised over $3,500 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. I participated in the Four Corners event, and after a series of other nail-biting events, the seniors beat the juniors eight to seven, and the sophomores beat the freshmen nine to four. I can honestly say it was a very close call, and I was very nervous numerous times throughout the night because the juniors really put up a great fight. This weekend, SEB has Fall Festival from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and the Homecoming game starting at 1:30 p.m. Also, the Senior Auction will begin at 12:00 p.m. It is sure to be a fun weekend. In November, SEB will host the Powder Pop Game and the Blood Drive in addition to their annual holiday project to benefit underprivileged children in Ben Salem. This concludes my report. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Samantha.
Hello, everyone. I hope that you had a great summer and are now enjoying the beautiful autumn season. This year, the junior class has gotten off to a great start. This past Friday, the 11th grade officers organized a trip to Six Flags Fright Fest, an event where workers dress up as all different types of zombies and walk around the park. Although I was unable to attend, I heard that even in the rain, the student body had a chillingly good time. The junior class is also starting to plan Fall Formal, and the student body is eagerly waiting their announcement of the theme. The regular fall sports season is coming, starting to come to an end. Many teams have already got, had their senior nights, wishing the graduating class good luck on their future endeavors. Last week, the women's soccer teams, Becca Margolis, scolded the winning goal against Pensbury to win 1-0 and hand Pensbury their first loss of the season. I am also proud to announce that Madeline Herr won the district golf championship after finishing three under par with a score of 140. On Tuesday night, the girls volleyball team also held their annual Dig Deep Night against South. Each year, the team holds this event to help raise awareness and money for breast cancer research and healing. This year, we raised $1,000 for the Healing Consciousness Foundation. In theater news, there is a famous saying, "Something is rotten in the state of Denmark." However, that is not true for Newtown. Norse theater group Sock and Buskin will, oh, for their fall performance, they're, the group will be presenting William Shakespeare's Hamlet. This classic, yet tragic, story will be brought to life November 19th through the 21st. So make sure to come out and see this spectacular performance. It is something you don't want to miss. Thank you, and here's Finn.
Hello. Another year is already underway, and it's great to be back. The sophomore class has enjoyed the last, the past couple of months. We elected an almost completely new set of student officers, and they began their year by instituting homeroom representatives that go to meetings with the officers and discuss what they and the student government have been doing, and then report this to their classrooms. Each homeroom has two representatives, and the system seems to be going smoothly. In the realm of music, Council Rock North has a new band director, Mr. Bishop, because Mr. Slutter moved to Rich Row Middle School. He has already gotten the marching band and most of Council Rock North's band groups in action with auditions and rehearsals, and has been very well received by the students. North hosted the Council Rock North Marching Band Invitational this past Saturday with nine different marching bands from the area participating. The event was a success, and all groups performed very well. Our group's multiple chorus and orchestra groups had their auditions in September and are now practicing for their fall performances. In academics, yesterday, many sophomores and juniors took the new form of the PSAT during the half-day. Other students had other activities. Freshmen and sophomores that didn't take the PSAT had a group bonding activity themed around diversity, friendship, and bullying, and seniors and juniors that didn't take it went to a college workshop that did many parts, including help with applications, information about tests and graduation, and different informative lectures about topics relating to mindfulness, scholarships, and opportunities. The year is off to a great start musically and academically, and I will update you in a couple of months. Here's Jake.
Thank you, Finn.
Good evening. My name is Jake Cohen. I'm a new freshman class of 2019 Student Advisory Board member. I'm extremely honored to be here standing before you all because when I found out I was chosen to be my class representative, I felt like this was an opportunity of a lifetime. I've always wanted to do something this high up in the student government, and I always wanted to have such a large responsibility like this. Again, thank you so much for this amazing opportunity to be representing my amazing class and school, Council Rock North. For many, this transition from Newtown Middle School was different, difficult for all the, with all adjustments to the new environment and the teachers, but it became significantly easier with the help from kickoff mentors, otherwise known as COM. COM consists of many upperclassmen in North who helped with the transition of incoming 9th graders like me to the high school. They started helping me and my whole class, our first orientation in Maine. From there, they helped with an additional orientation in August and for the first day of school on August 31st. The first day of school is mainly a day of anxiety and stress for us freshmen, but the way our COM mentors helped us suddenly diminish our negative feelings. When we were escorted to our homerooms, a couple of COM mentors followed us to be our guides for the day. From there, they told us valuable information about how the high school works, they answered many questions we had for them, and we also had an activity that we did to help us know our other classmates. In addition, they guided us around the building one more last time, and it really helped me and others make more of a sense to the new environment. Aside from the first day, our homeroom COM mentors visited us in two different homerooms to update us on more current news, and another visit I believe should be around the corner. Personally, I am so grateful for all the help they have given me and my whole freshman class, and I hope we can continue to have them for the future freshman coming to North. Now, approximately two weeks after the start of school, probably around the 17th or 18th of September, we had an activities fair, two days, for these, during all lunches in the auditorium. This is where a lot of schools' clubs are advertised in order, in order to get new people to sign up for them. The club's representative range is from cooking to debate to video game club. This is a great opportunity for a whole bunch of freshmen and a lot of other people who had to be involved in extracurricular activities. Overall, this is an amazing group opportunity for not only freshmen, but all the classes similarly wanted to get involved. One very popular club that many people have joined is Debate Club. The Debate Club consists of many debates or issues on topic between, topics between people with different viewpoints. There are two parts, which include a fun one where people can learn more about the club works, how the club works, and a competitive part which consists of many practices and competitions. Additionally, there are two types of events called debate events and speech events. The debate events are called Policy, Public Forum, and Lincoln Douglas, and the speech events are called Dramatic Interpretation, Extemporaneous, Oral Interpretation, and Student Congress. The Debate Club meets every week for practice as well, as well as for frequent tournaments throughout the year. This month's topic for Public Forum is the immigration crisis regarding refugees. People involved in this have to write an essay to state the pros and cons of their topics for the tournament. Important dates regarding the immigration, immigration crisis debate are October 1st for a workshop away from school, and October 28th for the first novice tournament in North. As the year goes on, I will have more updates on how the Debate Club's progressing. Lastly, on the last topic I want to bring up is an event called the Freshman Feud, which we actually have a week, had a week ago from today. Freshman Feud was an event exclusively for freshmen to help prepare to compete against the sophomores at Blue and White Night. It consists of events like an obstacle course in Four Corners, which also would be at Blue and White Night. This was a great turnout, as everybody who went seemed to enjoy the events, and I feel like this helps significantly, significantly to help give my class a good head start at Blue and White Night last night. So overall, this year's opened, so far opened up a lot of doors for me and other freshman in my, sorry, um, so opened up a lot of doors for me and others in my freshman class of 2019. I look forward to representing them here again in December. Thank you so much.
Well done, Jake. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kristin Fern. I'm a junior at Council Rock High School North. I'm also a second-year student in the Health Scientists Program at Middle Box Institute of Technology. Currently, Middle Box Institute of Technology was honored to have seven students participate in the Summer 2015 Pennsylvania Free Enterprise Week, known as PFEW. Students from the Council Rock School District who participated include Carly Marie Fullerton, Council Rock South Dental Occupations, and Joseph Nguyen, Council Rock North Automotive Technology. PFEW provides accepted junior and senior students the opportunity to learn about a wide array of career opportunities available to them. They also learn from industry professionals who engage and motivate them towards discovering their true potential. Students have the option of choosing to participate in mine coming college or Penn College of Technology, both located in Williamsport, PA. Both colleges offer scholarship money to graduates of one-week-long PFEW program upon acceptance to either school. The Culinary Arts Program at MBIT has been selected to participate in Seed Change, an event of the National Farm-to-School Network aimed at expanding farm-to-school activities at the state level to support better health outcomes for students, for children, and strong local economics. As part of Seed Change, Middle Box Institute of Technology received a $5,000 grant to improve upon the educational experiences currently provided through the school's Culinary Arts Program. This includes, but not limited to, purchasing an aeroponic growing system that would allow students enrolled in Culinary Arts Program to observe the stages of plant development year-round, understand the importance of eating fresh food, and learn the benefits of using seasonal fruits and vegetables. Furthermore, the grant will provide opportunities for students to travel to various farm, local farms. By doing so, the students will learn the importance of supporting local farms and purchasing locally grown, healthy fruits. We are pleased to announce that multimedia technology instructor, Mr. James Davie, was awarded his seventh Emmy Award at the 2015 Mid-Atlantic Emmy Award Ceremony, held on Saturday, September 19th, 2015. The 2015 Mid-Atlantic Emmy Award for Executive Producer/ Director within the Lifestyle Program slash Special Category was awarded to Mr. Davie in recognition of his work with A Taste of History, a television series. In particular, A Taste of History, The Roots of Carvelay Cooking in St. Lucia. The series now is in its seventh season, airs on WHYY. The Fall Occupational Advisory Committee Meeting will be held on Thursday, October 29th. This is a committee made up for community business professionals. There is a committee for each program offered at MBIT. The focus of the Fall OAC Meeting will be discussed curriculum. Aspirations, the restaurant run by aspiring chefs at MBIT, is scheduled to open on Wednesday, October 14th. The schedule for the school year and phone number for reservations are available on our website, www.mbit.org. Salon Extreme, the full-service salon at MBIT, will officially open for the school year on Thursday, November 5th. Additional information for a number of reservations are available also on our website, www.mbit.org. I would like to remind the community that they, that they can learn more about the latest happenings at MBIT by liking us on Facebook, following us on Twitter, and viewing our videos on YouTube. I look forward to reporting back to you on December's board meeting. Thank you for your time.
Excellent. Well done, Kristin. Yours off to a good start, huh, Ms. McCarthy? Excellent. I tell you what, I got three phone calls today about Blue and White Night, I guess, and then about the energy in town last night. Quite, quite the sight to see, I hear.
Actually, Dr. Foster attended part of it, and he was taking pictures and maybe even tweeting the whole time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Lambert, Superintendent's Report, please.
As you may know, the week of October 19th through the 23rd is National School Bus Safety Week. We sometimes forget the importance that our, our transportation folks have in the lives of our kids and our students and bringing them to us every single day. We have some recognitions to be announced, and Mr. Reinhardt, would you please do so?
Thank you. Second meeting in October, we always bring bus drivers in front of the board that have 25, 30, or more years of service with the district. Unfortunately, tonight, none of the three bus drivers could be in attendance, so I'm just going to talk a little bit about transportation and then recognize them at the end. But just some statistics from last year. Our buses traveled over 1.8 million miles. We used almost 300,000 gallons of diesel fuel, transported 12,700 students, of which 1,600 are transported to over 100 non-public schools, over 800 individual runs each day, 2,000 athletic team and field trips in a year. This year, as everyone knows, we went green, and we now have propane buses, and we believe it's great for the environment and also good for the economy. Economically, I should say, not good for the economy, but it's going to save us money. This year's honorees, Lori Ceteri is 25 years of service, Dee Citredi, 30 years of service, and Ray Ann Fisher is 30 years of service. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up that Jack Panero, our supervisor of transportation, has two more weeks before he retires. He's been with the district for 13 years overseeing the operations here. I'm going to miss him quite a bit. As a business administrator, you recognize the person under you based on the number of phone calls you have pushed up to you. I can't say I didn't have phone calls put up to me, but it was always for the right reasons. Jack was always making the appropriate decisions. And one thing I'll say about Jack is he'll fight the battle, but if he gets overturned, he walks away and he's fine with it. So I'm going to miss Jack greatly, and in the next two weeks, if you get a chance, I'd encourage each board member to give him a call and just thank him. So that's my report.
Thank you. Is it? All right, we'll move to public comment. Public comment's an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to a little longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It's our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. First, I have Heather Overhout.
I used to it so empty. I was a little nervous of what I did. Heather Overhout from Wrightstown. I wanted to come today and speak about full-day kindergarten, and the first thing that I want to say is that I think it's really important that people understand that the demands on our kindergartners are very different than what we have. And I went to full-day kindergarten, and this was my graduation project. It is literally an alphabet book where I wrote my letter and drew a picture of something that started with that letter. This was my third grader in May. She had to write her full name, and she says, "I am at Niagara Falls, and we are going in June." So that compared to what I was expected to know is vastly different, and I don't think two and a half hours is enough time to demand this of a five-year-old. I love full-day kindergarten for a lot of reasons. One is I love it for our ELL students who are immersed in the language. I think it would be awesome to have a kindergartner and one of their siblings that goes full day and see the difference in their language acquisition after one year. I love it for our students with needs, both students that come in identified, students we identify, students that really never get identified but still get support. I had a child go through early intervention, and I can tell you, it is miraculous, the gains that they get. You know, if you identify them early and service the crap out of them, you can make magnificent gains in their learning, and it touches on all pieces of it, social, behavioral, confidence as a learner. There's a lot of pieces that are not just that one little need that you service. I love it for our typical students because a little bit of practice can often make the difference between comprehension and mastery, and I see that a lot with my own kids, like, you know, he'll, we'll do a math problem, and they'll get it, but if they can do three more, then they really have it. And I think, you know, we don't ask kindergartners or first graders, like, what letter, what's the sound of letter A? We ask them to manipulate it within a word, right? So we want them to have a mastery of the letter sounds. I think it's a bonus to the taxpayers or to school districts, drive pricing with your real estate, period. It's, it's a non-issue. So if we want to maintain our property values, we have to be looked at as a rigorous, rigorous academic school district. I think as full-day kindergarten becomes the norm, we're going to look really backwards if we don't offer it. I know the political implications of this are really challenging. You know, you see a slide on the, on the overhead, and it's saved 26 million or spent 32 million over 10 years, and I know that that's a really hard trigger for you to pull. But I think that you know that we need to do it, and if we don't need to do it now, eventually we're going to have to do it either by state mandate or by public, public pressure. And I would ask that you do it now as we're revising our facilities, and if you can't do it now, and it's somebody else's battle to play, I would ask that you keep that in mind as you're making these plans, and just don't tie our hands so that we can't do it quickly and cheaply in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you.
That was perfect. Right on time. I don't have anybody else on the list. Is there any further public comment from the audience?
For the last, I guess, five years, I've watched you guys talk about health studies and capacity analysis and closing schools, or not closing schools, and full-day kindergarten and all those sorts of things. And two weeks ago, Robert Fraser just kind of laid it out there. This is what we've got. This is what we can do. As you might expect, I'm hearing a lot about it from the public. What's the plan? What are we going to do? And I keep telling everybody, don't worry about the plan. What's the goal? This board, this district has a chance to really do things right, get it right, and go forward. Plans are easy. Goals are harder. What do we want to look like in four years, five years from now? We ask our kids, what do they want to be when they grow up? What do we want to be in four or five years? The plan will follow. We need a goal. And I, I will tell anyone who wants to talk to me, the plan is irrelevant. The goal is the first, first step in this, and we, you folks, the community, has a chance to get this right and do it right for everyone. There's a lot of concern about redistricting. I recognize these are kids. We'll have to take that into account, but moving forward, let's, let's not lose sight of the goal, and we'll worry about the plan afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Marilyn Scarpa, Council Rock Education Foundation. This Tuesday, October 20th, at Council Rock North, we start our first speaker series. It's the third annual speaker series that the Education Foundation has presented to the district, and I encourage parents to attend. Our first subject this Tuesday is anxiety, which is very prevalent and relevant today. How to Help Your Kid Cope With, Your Child Cope With Stress. And our presenter is Dr. Catherine Dollsgaard, and she will have a discussion for the public. It's free to the public. We just asked that you register so we have the appropriate number of materials to hand out. You can register and find out more information about that at our website, www.creducutionfoundation.org. And like I said, this is the third speaker series that we've offered. This is the first one of this school year, but the previous years have been very widely received, and people have, it's gotten very great reviews. received, and people have, it's gotten very great reviews, so I encourage the public to attend this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have to say that the choir presentation tonight was just outstanding. That's one of the best new arrangements of the Star Spangled Banner I've heard in a long, long time. That should be, you know, sporting events and public events everywhere. And kudos to the staff and the kids on that. Great voices, a joyful sound. Thanks, Steve.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Nancy Cowell, Newtown Borough. I had to handwrite these, I had a pretty problem at home. President Obama once said that this season before elections is called silly season. I would like to call it misinformation season. A lot of things are being said on the campaign trail, just quite frankly, are not true. And I'm here tonight to set the record straight. I'm not here to support any candidates or oppose any candidates. I am here to tell you information, all of that at one time or another came from public record, either online or at subcommittee meetings. I have documents for every fact, and will gladly email the documents to anyone. Fact number one: since 2005, council enrollment has gone down 1,640 students. Since 2005, by the budget numbers dividing students, the cost per student has risen $6,542, from $13,448 to $19,906 at the present. CED does not have, as one candidate stated, and I'm not looking at that person.
Easy, Nancy.
5,226 devices available to students, giving a two-to-one ratio of computers to students. This includes, that number includes staff devices and devices assigned to one only child because they have an IEP that requires them to have a device. The elementary schools have the same number of technology allocated by the Department of Technology as they did 12 years ago. These are Matt Fredrickson's words, they are not mine. And in some schools, they have more. They have more because their PTOs donated them or they came out of the principal's budget. I have the numbers of every computer and where they're located at home on my computer, and will gladly share it with anyone. The public was told that Highland Elementary would cost $15 million, and the bids came in at $18 million. The public was told that Goodne would cost $8 million, then $13 million, and $19 million.
Nancy, that's three minutes. Could you wrap it up?
As far as what tools are available to fit more students, I suggest that everybody go to the document now online, done by Mr. Fraser at the last meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I'm sorry, there's a correction remaining. Okay?
The number that she's speaking about, 5,622 devices, is a number provided by Mr. Fredrickson, and that does not include the devices that are assigned to Chancellor 24 at the NAC or Administrative. That's 358 additional devices.
Mr. Grubbs, provided by Matt. All right, we're gonna move to our discussion item for tonight, our draft comprehensive plan, and it is comprehensive. I'll turn it over to Dr. Lambert, administration.
If I could take a second, if you'll indulge me, I just wanted to comment on the speaker spirit series that Mrs. Scarpa talked about. I just wanna say, from my lens, we have seen a great increase in anxiety in our children. Dr. Dollsgard, I have spoken to many, many people that have listened to her speak, I have spoken with her myself. If anxiety is touching your family in any way, you will not be sorry that you take the time to hear that presentation. She is absolutely outstanding in the information that she shares about working with our kids. So I would encourage folks to attend that.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So is there a particular age group that is specialized in the talk, or it covers K through 12?
I don't know exactly what her presentation will be, but in the past, it would be appropriate to any child, right, age level.
And so what have you been seeing when you say that there's more anxiety? Are there certain parts of the district or age groups that...
I would say that we have seen more children having issues related to anxiety, and we typically see it starting at late elementary school.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Moving on to something far more exciting, the comprehensive plan. As you may know, the Pennsylvania Department of Education requires every school district in the Commonwealth to do a comprehensive plan. Council Rock is a Phase I school district, so it is our turn to do ours. This has to be done every three years. The current plan that we are talking about this evening will cover us from September 2016 through 2019. The plan does not, clearly does not cover everything that we are going to try to accomplish in the district, but it just gives the overarching goals that we are going to be focusing on. We started with a committee of 32 members, teachers, administrators, students, parents, community members. Dr. Foster and Mrs. Brooks joined us for those, I think. I don't think there were any other board members.
Just at the very beginning.
Correct. From that, we developed our framework, and then there were subcommittees, subcommittees of subcommittees, subcommittees of subcommittees, and subcommittees that then got together to polish and put the finishing touches on the plan. We are required to put the plan on public display for 30 days prior to it being submitted to the Department of Education for approval. The plan itself is web-based. We input the information into a web system. We then can print a document from that. It's about 150 pages, about 60% of that is the special education plan, which was actually already approved by the Department of Education and been on public display. It's a very cumbersome document to read the way it's laid out, so what we did is we took out the special education component, because that's already been approved, and took the rest of it and made it into a much more user-friendly version that will be on the website and will be on, made available in the public libraries within the community. The full version will be available, and also this summary, which is a much shorter, easier to read document, that I promise you captures everything that you need to see in that plan. So with that, what I'm going to do is introduce a member from each one of the three subcommittees that we ended up with for our three goals, just to briefly go over for you what the goals are in those plans. And we're gonna start with Christine Trioli is gonna talk for you about building relationships. Christine is taking over that lead, along with Al Funk on that committee from Join the Clinton, actually. Christine.
Thank you, doctor. We, formerly, the Building Relationships was called the Engaging the Community. The title was changed to show the broad nature of our district's commitment to engaging all stakeholders. Under Building Relationships, there are three distinct platforms by which we would like to do this. We want to continue building our relationships within the district, between the district and the community, and through district's communication with our stakeholders. Many strives have been made under previous plans, namely, things like ListServe, our Webmasters, CR Care Day, and many of those items have come from the goals from our strategic and comprehensive planning. Under the new plan in Building Relationships, within the district, we'll look at our staff-to-staff relationships. Much of that will be talked about by Ann DeMayo under our PLCs. Our goal is to see our PLCs increased to where our population of professionals are participating in that forum. Our student-to-student relationships, we looked for expansion in our mentoring and orientation programs. The work that we intend to do is to look at what we're doing now, how can we expand upon it, look at our programs at the high school level in mentoring, and see how we can introduce that at the middle school and elementary levels. Between our relationships between the district and the community, we will look at things like our cable access channel. The cable access channel has been an ongoing point of reference in what can we do more with, where can we make expansion. We also would like to have a greater presence at civic meetings, and representation at such meetings would be students and staff. Additionally, when we look in building our relationships with the community, we intend to assess how our stakeholders access information about our district. What types of technology do they use? What are the ways that we can communicate with our stakeholders that will meet their needs and optimize the technology that we have available to do more and to reach a wider audience? Social media will be a component that we look at. How do we enhance things under social media, like Twitter and Facebook and our own website? Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Well done.
Thank you very much. And then if we could move to Ms. Ann Bell DeMayo, our professional development coordinator, who could come up to the podium to speak about the teaching and learning, improving student achievement component of the plan.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. It's nice to be here. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to share a little bit about the work of the Teaching and Learning, Improving Student Achievement Subcommittee. We had a great team working together, along with Dr. Lambert and Mr. Desko, really taking the opportunity to reflect on how we're currently meeting the needs of our students and also honoring the tireless efforts of our staff members to do so each and every day. We thought a natural way for us to enhance both the collaborative culture that we have here in Council Rock, along with the high achievement, was to continue to expand our work in the area of professional learning community teams. So we're really excited to have that chance to further the teams we have and eventually expand them district-wide. Through the expansion of our PLC teams, we will help teachers to use data more effectively when making instructional decisions. We will create more consistency in how the curriculum is implemented, and will increase the use of assessment for learning. And we will ensure that assessments accurately measure learning targets identified for students in each course and at each grade level. Ultimately, this work of our professional learning community teams will lead to increased student achievement and a continued realization of our vision here in Council Rock, which is success for every student every day. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Fredrickson to speak about the technology component.
Our focus of, the focus of the technology committee really looked at, is great cross-section of individuals, technology evangelists, common users, people who are challenged. And one of the things that we really, really clarified that came out that we wanted to include in the strategic plan is a focus on the professional development aspect of technology. We wanted to focus on, we have three goals: technology, instruction in the classroom, how is technology being integrated in the classroom, how are teachers using it? And we recognize that technology is just one more tool in their toolkit, but how can we take advantage of the tools that are there? What are the students using? How are they using them? Companion to that is BYOD. Do we have everything in place that we need to support BYOD when it's appropriate? Children bringing in, students bringing in their own devices and using them. A most common device used today is a smartphone, which is not something we anticipated a couple of years ago when we started working on the infrastructure. So we wanna make sure that we're recognizing and administering those types of needs. And the last thing is we wanna talk about, or we talked about and identified, is the technology infrastructure itself. Because technology is a tool, we wanna make sure that the technology that we're implementing and the way that we're implementing is appropriate based on the needs of the teachers and the needs of the students, so that the educational process drives the implementation of technology and not the other way around.
Okay, thanks, Matt. And that is the plan. It will be up for review. If you review it and have any comments, please get to us, and we will certainly look forward to incorporating your thoughts.
Excellent. Thanks, and thanks to everybody who put a lot of work into that. Any questions or comments from the board at this time? All right, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Mrs. Thomas?
Sure.
Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through F, as contained in the attachments to this agenda, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Grubbs. We have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abramsen?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes, with the exception of item D, treasurer's report.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Director, Ms. McKessy stepped away.
Ms. McCall and Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Byler, if you could please read item number one for board approval.
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Foster. Questions for Mr. Trioli? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy stepped out, still. And Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Abramsen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Right? Motion passes, seven zero. Mrs. Brooks, we'll keep clipping along here, if you could read number three, or turn number two, I'm sorry. Yep.
I move to approve the following two new high school physical education courses: accelerated PE, team games and sports, and accelerated PE, individual activities, beginning in the 2016-2017 school year.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Byler.
I have a question.
No, I think we've got some gym teachers in the audience, too.
You mean, physical education teachers?
I'm sorry.
Commonly known as...
Apologize.
Did, we had a question in academic standards when this came up, about whether these courses could be used in lieu of a physical education class. This would be, the students might take this instead of taking physical education and this. Were you able to research that and come to an answer?
Yeah, please. Yeah, we looked into it. The way that we have the courses set up, they're a little, they're way too narrow-focused to be able to cover the entire curriculum, so it wouldn't be an even exchange to take one of these classes and substitute it for the requirement, because it's a much narrower focus.
A much narrower focus than physical education?
Yes, than the entire curriculum.
Interesting. Thank you.
I have a question before you walk away. Can you give an example? I see the fielding and striking games. What's a striking game?
Fielding and striking games, those are like your baseball, softball, anything where you're taking an implement out into the field. All the terms that we're using in the, in these new courses, they're all the categories that are with the new national standards that we adopted as of this current school year, and they were put into play last spring.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Let me just explain what the rationale was behind your question. I had wanted to explore whether we could use this course in lieu of a physical education course, so that a student who might wanna take this, because it's rather involved and accelerated as it's described, would then also still have time where the PE class might exist to take other courses, you know, so they could have a broad spectrum. So I'm not sure that I'm confident in the, not, I understand the answer, but it might hope that we would have been able to offer this course as in lieu of a physical education credit, since we're the ones, this is the school district, who define the requirements, I believe, for what constitutes a physical education class. So that would allow our students more flexibility. They could take Phys Ed and this, or they could take this and then some class where they would have otherwise taken Phys Ed. So for that reason, I'm glad to offer the course, but I just don't, I think that we have more opportunity or more ways to offer this, there's more opportunity for our students than this opportunity and Phys Ed. I wanna be very careful that sometimes we get into a situation where we offer many gradations in a course, which increases the number of sections, and then we have trouble filling those sections. So I wanna be very careful that we're not diluting it, and that this could, by just being another offering, in addition to PE, I have that sense. And so for that reason, I like the idea of the course, but I don't necessarily agree with the notion that it could not be substituted for a physical education credit.
Mr. Desko?
If I may, what Liz was speaking to was, the way these courses are structured, they are really a subset of what students would be exposed to in a year-long physical education class. In other words, the component of fitness you likely would not see to the same level in the individual activities class. So to allow a student to take this course in lieu of... So to allow a student to take this course in lieu of, through our conversation, was to really not expose them to what they now receive in our year-long physical education class. The second point that you made, I just want to speak to, when we looked at putting these into place, we meet with our schedulers before we ever bring these forward and we looked at the number of students who select the current accelerated class. And because of that, there are enough sections that we could either run each of these or if we didn't have enough for one of those, certainly the other one would run because there are, there are multiple sections of the current accelerated course that these two courses would replace. And if I misspoke, please.
Well, then with that assurance, I will approve. But I think it's something we need to look at, which is we want to be very careful about dividing courses into many different components that each becomes smaller and smaller sections when, when we're facing a budget and we're facing, you know, trying to optimize the placement of students in the courses. So that's, that would be the nature of my opposition, that with your assurances, I then will agree with it.
I just want to also clarify, these, it sounds like we're adding two new courses, but really we're eliminating the existing class.
Right. Yeah, we're taking the current class and we're basically, essentially splitting it into two.
Right. So in the listing of what we're offering, it's actually one additional course.
Correct.
And, you know, as we discussed at the academic standards meeting, this is like an elective, just like anything else. We offer English, nine, 10, 11, whatever, but there are additional elective courses that you can take. So in that spirit, that's how this is being viewed, correct?
Correct.
And also, just to be clear, there's no cost involved.
There is no cost involved.
No additional costs.
Correct. No additional costs.
Well, let me ask that, that's an interesting question. So the course, when you say there's no additional cost, will they be taught coincidence so that the instructor for the course would otherwise have, will they, will the instructor have to work a different period or was the instructor free previously? You said it was previously one course and now it will be two. So will there be twice as many instructors? Will they run time, will it, you understand what I'm asking there?
I think so. No, in other words, if we were, if we're currently running four sections of the accelerated PE course.
And you run two and two now.
Correct. That's what we would anticipate. And they spoke to students, you know, and got a sense that there would probably be a relative, you may run three and one, but you're, you know, you're not going to run more sections.
Any last questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero. Ms. McKessy, can I ask you to read number three, please?
I move to approve the tow behind boom lift bid number fifteen dash forty-two to best line equipment at a final cost not to exceed $36,179.48, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Byler. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? What and why? Do we have one? Is this new? What do we use it for? What color will it be?
Okay. Currently, when we need to replace lamps in parking lots, we wait until several are out at several locations and we rent a lift at a cost of about $800 plus for a two-day period. And we do that about five times a year. If you look at the payback based on the amount of time that we currently rent a lift, it would be about a nine-year payback. But the bottom line is, we should be doing this more on a monthly basis, not every, every other or more, to be responsible and manage the parking lot lighting better. And there's other things that we have to reach, tree trimming, other things that we rent them for beyond that. So when you look at it that way, we would basically pay the cost of this back in about three and a half years.
Since Mrs. Sexton isn't here, I ask this question in her honor. Where would it be stored? Would it be stored outside in the rain?
Well, that's always a good question. I'm sure it's going to move around the district and it'll be stored, you know, between the high schools and maybe over at Twining Ford if necessary.
But it's okay if it's left outside in the rain?
We can cover the, cover the components of it. It's, it's a pull behind trailer.
Because we've had components that I was told, we purchased that rusted from being out there in the elements. Again, she's not here, she might bring it up.
Right. We once had a truck with a lift. Then we had to maintain the truck and the lift. It's, I think, more cost-effective to just purchase a pull behind that we can use any vehicle to get to where we need it, so.
At, at some of the football games, this will sound totally familiar, at some of the football games, I noticed that our opposing teams have a rather elaborate camera on a spike way up high that they watch the games from. They remotely control that. So this goes up 50 feet?
Fifty, yes.
So is it also a potential to use that, for adults to use it and staff to use it, not for children to use it, in conjunction with our football program or our sports program to be able to capture game films or other things, particularly over at our primary stadium? Is that a potential to use? Have we considered, we haven't considered?
Well, I, I understand your question. I guess my only concern with that would be is how often it would be used. I don't want it to be overused and not be available for what, what we would need it for and so I respect the question.
I understand I just asked the question because realistically, you know, we were very proud of our, of our people who are here today singing. We have two excellent band programs and they run competitions. And to be able to view those events from high or up higher really adds to the value of what you see, particularly when they're recorded or when they're practiced and developed. So I just ask, in that light, for special events, I guess we would be able to use this?
I would agree, for special events, for sure. I think the only thing I'd be concerned about at that point would be the insurance requirements, which I would ask Mr. Reinhardt to assist with for those events.
I just, it's a resource for the district, just keep it in mind as something to use for a tool.
Yep, I agree.
Any other questions?
Yeah, is this a new piece of equipment?
Yes.
I'm glad Dr. Foster asked a question about storage because I have a real concern about that. You know, I'd like to buy an RV and I don't, I don't because I don't have any place to keep it, to store it. I don't want it in my driveway. Maybe I could leave it with you, I don't know. But it really concerns me, spend $36,000 on a new piece of equipment that we're going, where we're going to count on someone tarping up the parts that have to be covered. Because the, I'm not sure that the history of the care of the equipment really gives me confidence, at least, that that's going to be taken care of. I don't know if a nine and a half year turnaround time on the rentals that we're using, I don't know if it's making sense to me. So I'm not real comfortable in voting for this now.
What I said was, it's nine and a, nine and a half years if you were to use it the way we rent currently, but the most appropriate way to do this would be on a monthly basis, not every two to three. I agree with you on storage. At one point, I actually suggested that we consider metal pole buildings, one at north and one at south, but that was not really considered when I brought it to the board. So we have rented some C boxes that we use, for example, the two mowers that cost over $100,000. We store those in C boxes so that they stay out of the weather. Certainly something we could consider for this. Until such time, you know, we see the need to, you know, consider some more suitable storage for us.
Where would you put a pole barn?
I had sketches that I had shared. I can certainly prepare those and, and send them out. There's, there's room at south where we have the existing storage next to the tower and at north, there's room where we have a small masonry building now that we could put a, a building as well.
I, you know, I, I'm not going to be voting for this tonight, just for that reason alone.
Sure.
I think we can get good use out of it, but it's all we're resolved, this storage issue, I can't, I'm not comfortable voting for.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'd be willing to bring the pole barn item back to the board?
Would love to.
I just wanted to say that I definitely think that the lights in the parking lot need quicker attention. I, a lot of things happen in our buildings at night and all the lights working is much preferable. So for that reason alone, I'm in favor of us having the equipment so that that can be done. And if for any reason this doesn't pass, I would like to see us financially commit to renting the equipment to get that done sooner. Because I've been in parking lots where there's been multiple lights out. Now, you can still see, I don't want to be crazy, but I just second the parking lot light issue. If this doesn't resolve, we need another light. That's all I'm saying.
Well, is that the sole reason, and I'm sorry if I jumped in, is that the sole reason we're not replacing these bulbs faster is because you have to go out and rent this?
Well, we try to, we try to be responsible with our spending. So it's $800 every, every time we rent it. So if a lamp goes out today and I replace it for $800 for the lift and one goes out next week, we generally wait until we have several out and then at the end of the month or the next month, we go to those respective facilities and replace it. We're not generally losing all the lamps at one time or several where it's going to compromise the foot candles or security, but we're trying to be mindful of how often we rent it, yes.
So you're renting it about once a month, you're saying?
No, we're renting it about five times a year.
Yeah, not once a month.
So how often do you think you'd be using it if you, if you bought?
I think monthly. We'd also use it for, for tree trimming and other things. It wouldn't just be to replace lights. There's, the grounds crew are out trimming trees. There's some trees that we pay other people to help trim because we don't have the ability to get to those the way we would with a lift. So it would also help in that regard.
Can you buy used equipment? Are we able to buy used equipment?
I'm sure we could look into used equipment on, through a dealer or, you know, I'm not sure. Generally, we, we look for new and we maintain it.
Well, for something that we're using, really not on a regular basis, but once a month, something like that, and something that we're not really storing inside, I wonder if that wouldn't make sense.
Sure.
Well, I wouldn't, I think Jerry did raise an interesting point, though, around not necessarily using it once a month for specific activities. If there's things that this can do that provide a value that we don't necessarily have today, whether it's the band program or the sports programs, you know, that, that gives us something that we, we don't think about if we're renting. So, you know, to your point, maybe it's not just trees, maybe it's not just that, maybe there are a bunch of other things that we can do. I agree with you completely on the storage piece. It would be a shame to spend that kind of money and not do it, so maybe you guys can...
Yeah, I just think back to that equipment that we, we got pictures of sitting outside all winter long and, and that really gets me, you know. Even working on the farms around here growing up, we always made sure our equipment was inside and it just seems a waste. So that's my final comment.
Can I? I'm sorry. Could I just get a sense, I mean, does anybody have an appetite to have a discussion again about the pole barns? This man was beat up over those pole barns and we didn't want them. And we said, "Go back and take your, take your pole barns and run along." I mean, if, if, if storage is now a concern, do we want to have Doug bring those sketches back and let's talk about it again?
Well, you know, there's the KVK piece that's still
Agreed.
Hanging out there.
Yes.
And I, and I think, and honestly, I can't remember the beat up. Maybe you remember it better. But, you know, there was the sense of, do we need to throw stuff away? Are we going to consolidate? Where are we going to be? So I don't know.
I agree, we need a plan and we've talked about that and I think that we're working toward it, certainly. I think it's everybody's priority. I just, do we want to talk about that as one piece of whatever the storage issues are across the district?
Maybe you circulate what the presentation was and then we can come back with the next facilities meeting if the group has a...
Yeah, because my recollection was more that like, I don't remember a beat up thing, but maybe I'm not remembering it right, but that it was more along the lines of, you know, not necessarily right now, but in the context of us figuring out how we're going to use that storage space at KVK, where we're obviously having to have a really direct look at our storage needs, let's just bring that back as part of the conversation because we need to know, we're going to know at a facilities meeting what that KVK space is going to be used for. So it's in that context.
When was the original pole barn discussion?
We just, we touched on those.
So maybe that's the confusion. There have been...
We, yeah, we touched on those back when we talked about the overall budget for several of the projects and I think Patty spoke loudest to the pole barns and her want to support those at that time.
I agree.
And then it, it went away after that meeting. But I can certainly bring things back and we can revisit, you know, that storage whenever you wish. Just tell me.
Well, we do have this KVK issue hanging out there, so.
We do have KVK, but the...
The difference between...
Hang on, guys, one more time, Mr. Byler and then we'll go with Mr. Grubb.
I hope you got my email. I'd like to tour that facility with you when you go to see what's available.
I did not see your email.
Did you go already?
No.
Okay. So just, if you wouldn't mind. So there may be a perfect opportunity to store some equipment out there. So I'm, I'm happy to have a discussion about the pole barn. I don't remember that discussion while I was on the board in depth. I certainly don't remember you getting beat up about it, but look, we're spending an awful lot of money on two schools right now, so this may be a very small expense in comparison. And we've got a lot of equipment to maintain, so if we're going to continue to buy these things, we should maintain them.
I agree. I appreciate your support.
My, my perspective on the KVK, for people who are following, they don't know what this conversation is. KVK is a built, is a drug company, a generic drug company, that has purchased the, what was the Lockheed facility. And in doing so, through various contracts and negotiations with them, they have agreed to provide us storage of about 6,000 square feet over there. And we have to assess that and decide what it is. My understanding, though, would be that that store, this storage, when you have the pole barn, is more for onsite storage in terms of, these are things that are used onsite. That's why the, the mowers and whatnot at south, that, that's more of what I understood in Doug's, Doug's request. The longer-term storage at KVK would be more of a separate warehousing situation where I don't think we'd be in the same position to be bringing motorized equipment in and truthfully, a pole barn from a liability perspective, being a freestanding structure, having, having devices in there that have gasoline and other flammables is probably a safer, wiser choice than trying to store them at a, at a commercial facility. And that's, that's just my perspective on it.
Well, I just, let me just find it. I have no idea what, what the site looks like. So we don't know. They may have a, a huge pole barn there that they may say, "Okay, here's one, you know, a portion of your 6,000 square feet," so.
Also for me, I mean, I wasn't necessarily thinking of expanding other things that we were doing at KVK. I'm just saying that in determining what we're going to put at KVK, we're obviously having a conversation about the district in general and what needs to be stored and it would certainly be an appropriate time to talk about storage within our grounds at the same time as we're assessing the storage needs overall.
So I think the answer, Ms. McKessy, is yes. But I think it'd be helpful to get that information out prior to, and then go over to the next facilities meeting, so you can refresh our memories. Okay, so may I have a roll call vote on this motion, please?
Mr. Byler?
No.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
So if one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight...
Motion passes seven to one. Mr. Grubb, if I could ask you to read number four, please?
Sure, why not? I move to approve the amendment to the Sinisus agreement at a total cost not to exceed $30,000, subject to audit.
subject to audit.
Saagar?
Thank you, Mr. Bylick. Any questions for Mr. Frederickson? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Eight oh, motion passes. And Dr. Foster, if you could please read the last motion.
I would like to, but I would have a request before I read it. So, do we, do we have any appetite to put a not to exceed on, on, on this? Is that the right way to proceed? Um, 'cause it is open-ended. I, I mean, obviously, the administration would, would never just keep checking, uh, cutting checks from now to the end of time, but, um, is that, what is our, our turning feel about that?
The, the way to go about it would be to put a not to exceed number in the agreement itself, um, and then, and then have it, have it in the agreement itself rather than as part of the motion.
Okay, so, so the, the not to exceed amount, what I would recommend based on what I was told to be five thousand dollars. So, if we can approve it, continue upon that, I don't know.
Sure, and I can, um, just add that, uh, by, by handwritten markup to the version that Mr. Block signs, assuming the rest of the board approves it, if that's fine with you.
So, when, so when we read the motion, i- it's understood to be, what, you wanna add that to your motion? Will you just, right, you would add that at the end with, with the, with the agreement amended?
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, so, uh, I move to approve the agreement between, the agreement between CRSD and SSKW LLP to provide representation regarding twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen access billing at a cost of a hundred ninety-five dollars per hour with the revision that the costs not exceed a thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McKessy. Any questions? Any other questions? All right, hearing no objections, I would ask the secretary to record the motion as passing by unanimous consent. Mr. Cox, Solicitor's Report, please.
I have no executive session to report since the board's last meeting on October first. And I shouldn't mention, as I do from time to time, that, um, I typically don't comment on substantive matters in my Solicitor's Report, not because I don't care to or out of laziness or something, but because they're typically confidential matters involving students and personnel and matters in litigation. So, other than that, Mr. Block, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go to board items now. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Okay, we'll move on to the, Dr. Foster?
You know, actually, it should more properly be board comment.
All right, so hold it. We'll go to the committee reports. Ms. Brooks, academic standards.
The next meeting for academic standards is Thursday, November fifth, and we will be having a discussion of our PSSA and Keystone results.
Excellent. Ms. McKessy, facilities?
Facilities met on October eighth, uh, where Mr. Taylor distributed the Capital Improvement Planning Book, the updated revised, uh, book which he does annually, and it is a tremendous volume of work. And we all thank you very much for the time and energy that goes into preparing that. Um, you did indicate that that would be available online at some point in time after everything was scanned to PDF, which is a extraordinary, extraordinarily laborious process, um, so it might be a bit of time, but that will ultimately be available. Act thirty-four hearings, uh, for renovations to Holland Middle School and the new Newtown Middle School will be held on November nineteenth. Is that at six?
Yes, six, six, one, five.
And please also note that there have been and will be continued ongoing changes and revisions to the website with regard to facilities master planning and facilities in general, and updates are being made and, and the areas of that and the ease of which you can access, um, that is, we're slowly improving upon. Next meeting will be the twenty-second of October.
Where pole barns will be discussed.
Where pole barns will be discussed.
Mr. Grub, Finance Committee, please.
At our most recent meeting, we, we discussed among other things, we did talk a little bit about our investment advisor that we're working towards. Uh, I'm trying to remember what else we spoke about that night. We spoke about, again, the policy that had come before the board before and will come again, which has to do with the inventory of, uh, and the level of materiality which is required under GAZB. What else do we go over here and call?
Didn't we have PFM out to talk about the bond issues at the same rate they...
Oh, yes, we talked about the middle bucks of tech debt and we also talked about our two thousand sixteen capital plan and we went over that and how we were gonna move forward with that.
We've had a meeting here since that because if you called it later that week, we voted on the, on the middle bucks institute technology debt. The next meeting is October twenty-second, across the hall, six thirty. We're gonna talk about the, uh, in a policy, uh, which regards investments. It's a draft investment policy discussing what we can and should invest in. Again, this is towards giving guidance and direction to this new advisor that we've taken on. Uh, we do need to look at and discuss a selection of a custodial bank, uh, the banks that will hold our money and that with whom we deal. Uh, we do need to potentially look at the selection of money managers. This is in conjunction, again, with the advisors in terms of who will be the money managers, the actual investment people. Uh, moving forward, there'll be a discussion about, should we have an ad hoc committee? And this will be an ad hoc committee, more or less, I, I look at you, Mark, 'cause I think you'll make a valuable contribution here, uh, around those selection of money managers, selection of custodial bank. This is area of your professional expertise, uh, and it's something where, uh, I think a subset of the finance committee will probably want to, much as we did in selecting the advisor, is delve into the selection of the money managers and the, and the custodial banks. That's the, October twenty-second, across the hall.
Thank you, Mr. Grub, and we had our first official meeting of the Policy Committee this evening, so Dr. Foster, if you could take that and MBIT, please?
Sure, thanks. So, um, the Policy Committee met at six PM and we recorded on YouTube, is that right? So, and how do we find it, if, if you wanna?
It shows up on our YouTube channel. It's just one of the videos that's available.
Okay.
It's on video.
So, you go to, you, so where do you go? What URL?
If you go.
Youtube.com and then search for Council Rock School District.
Okay, so go to YouTube and search for Council Rock.
There's a link on the board to the Council Rock page.
Okay, great. So, if, if, if you really wanna know exactly what was discussed, go, go there and listen to the one and a half hours. But, but in brief, um, we are in the process of updating our policies. If you look at them, they have, some of them are quite old and anachronistic. The first item was to entertain the possibility of getting the Pennsylvania School Board Association to, uh, go over our policy manuals, a service they provide for a fee, uh, of about sixty-eight hundred dollars and they'll take a top to bottom review. It'll take two to three years to work our way through, uh, the three hundred and eighteen policies that we have. We're hoping we can get the three hundred and eighteen reduced to number somewhat. Um, and then we, we went through some policies. I'm not going to enumerate them, but, uh, if you wanna know more, please watch the meeting. And we will, we'll have to discuss when to meet again. It really depends on the, the, we have a lot on our plate. We have some questions from the meeting that we'll be working with our solicitor to navigate and I'd expect it's possible we can meet, uh, in, in late November or again in January. It just depends on how fast things go, so. MBIT, I regret to inform the public that due to important personal conflicts, neither Mr. Bylick nor myself attended the last meeting. The agenda was very light. Um, I would refer you to the MBIT website, the executive packet, to see what was done there and we weren't there.
Yeah, I do have one update, though. Um, I, uh, spoke to the solicitor for MBIT, yeah, last night and we're informed that the authority voted to demolish the farmhouse. So, um, that was the recent update that we had that discussion, I think, either here or at our facilities meeting. But, um, that's disappointing. You always hate to see an old building go, but it was beyond our control, so.
Okay, uh, I spoke to Ms. Sexton earlier today. No update from the IU. She'll have one at, at our next meeting. So, with that, we'll move on to our second round of public comment. Is there any public comment?
Never enough time, Mr. Block.
Never.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. Council Rock has had many chances to get it right. Instead, they delayed, got it wrong, or even made it worse. The board voted to set all North Hampton students to north, the bigger school, one hundred and one classrooms to eighty-three, and now north has four hundred less students. The consequence, wasted space, wasted energy, classes cut, shuttle forces, and not enough enrollment to run classes. The board had the chance to get it right in Holland Elementary when it watched its enrollment go down for six years. But instead of planning for a redistricting when it was rededicated in two thousand and ten, it won't happen till two thousand and seventeen and Holland Elementary will sit, underutilized by almost two hundred students for four years. The board had the chance to get it right when the Capital Planning Committee gave the stats that Wrightstown could close and it's recently affirmed by Dr. Frazier. The consequence is the fifth and sixth graders had to leave their school and sometimes their siblings and one point three million dollars got left on the table. The board had the chance to right-size schools before it voted a hundred and ten million for the two new elementary schools, Holland Middle renovation in Newtown. But instead, they're making both schools big enough to fit all of North Hampton students, fifty-five percent. The consequence is the other schools gonna sit with empty classrooms. The board had the chance to get it right when they planned its last year of recommended redistricting to be done by the superintendent who knew the schools before he left. Consequence, that won't be done till two thousand and seventeen. You can't fix something unless you know it needs to be fixed. And with Dr. Frazier, I am hopeful that the board and the administration gets it right and that savings will be realized to help taxpayers and invest in educational outcomes for students. If any one person thinks that they can get it right, they are wrong. It takes a majority. For the last few years, the majority has been too busy denying problems and patting themselves on the back. If CR, the voter, the administration, and the board keep doing what they have been doing, they're gonna get what they got. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to board comment. Mr. Grub?
Sorry, Dan. Um, I just wanna make the public aware that we did not redistrict this community and send all of North Hampton to Council Rock North. Um, that's just something that was said at the public podium just now. We didn't send all of our students at North Hampton to north. Some go to north, some go to south. So, you know, that's, I just wanna make sure everybody doesn't think we've just redistricted, that the speaker just said we sent everybody from North Hampton to north. That's not true. Thanks.
Uh, Dr. Foster, you said you had...
I do, I do. I, I love being mistaken for better-looking, smarter gentlemen. Mrs. McCarthy was very nice to talk about my, uh, participation in blue and white, but it was Dr. Frazier.
Yeah, I figured. I hadn't seen it. I haven't seen a tweet from you.
She forgot her boss. Do you believe that? You know, it was just a slip of the tongue. So, I'm honored with the, with the mistake. I, I feel good about it, but I wanted to correct the record.
You would've had a good time had you gone now.
Had I gone? I'm sure it was a good time.
And he will go in years to come.
Yes, sure.
Ms. Brooks?
Um, I just wanna point out that there is a small error on our agenda, just for anybody who might be looking at it online or in the audience. Uh, on November twelfth, it lists it as a facilities meeting, but I'm relieved because of Thanksgiving, it is facilities and finance that day. Um, so that was just...
That's good. Dr. Lambert, you just check into that with Dr. Frazier, get that right, of course. Thanks.
Um, the other thing is, um, I wanted to announce, uh, to the community that the date for Relay for Life has been set and the date is Saturday, May twenty-first. It's a wonderful event. Uh, you can check it out online, relayforlife.org/PANewtown. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, we, the school board will once again have a team, though, in the spirit of full disclosure. If my daughter continues on the path she's on, she will hopefully be graduating from college that weekend. Um, so I'm hoping to not be at Relay for Life because I will be at that event. Um, but nonetheless, I'm a part of the, uh, Team Leadership Committee and will help to form a team and, uh, I can't say enough good things about that event. It's a wonderful community thing that involves all the schools.
Excellent, thanks. Any more board comment?
Yes, I have a couple.
Bylick?
Had the opportunity to attend the board supervisors' meeting in Newtown, uh, last night and their sound system is amazing. So, we always hear from the folks in the audience that they can't hear us and I sat all the way in the back of the room and I could, I could hear everything that was said. So, I would ask if maybe it wouldn't make sense to have someone from, uh, Technology to take a ride up there and see how they're, they're configured. Now, it's a new building and it was set up for a meeting room instead of the old, fitting a meeting room in what used to be two classrooms, but, uh, I look, I looked at the speakers. They look the same, so just maybe a field trip if, if we can do that, that'd be great. I wanted to also make an announcement for the Council Rock Education Foundation, if I can. We, um, started an alumni group and there's going to be an all-class alumni happy hour mixer on Friday, November twenty-seventh from four to six at the Newtown Temperance House, five South State Street in Newtown. It's free for all Council Rock alumni, so if you're from Fensbury or someplace else, you have to pay and...
Or your spouses.
What, what if you're on, what if you're on the board?
Board members don't count unless you're an alumni, so you can still come, Bill. You just have to pay, that's all.
Are you the only alumni on the board?
Yes.
Well, I did two, I did two years.
Proudly.
He, he's letting qualify.
You didn't graduate?
He's letting me qualify.
It's not prison, Andy. So, um, okay, so it's free for all Council Rock alumni and then the other, um, the other item...
Can I ask you a quick question about that? Is there an RSVP for alumni? Only reason I'm asking is there's, there was a, a reunion once and I noticed that the more people signed up, it just started...
More people came.
More people came because they, oh, so and so, I get a, a...
Well, there's a, there's a Facebook page now, right, um, and then there's a www.rockalumni.org.
Got it.
So, www.rockalumni.org. Uh, and the last thing is, this Saturday, the Newtown Rotary, Rotary Club will be collecting, continue to collect, um, bicycles, I'm so sorry, I'm trying to find that, for Pedals for Progress. So, Pedals for Progress ships bicycles to developing countries in Latin America, Africa, and Eastern Europe. In these countries, the bikes are reconditioned by partner agencies and distributed at low cost to poor working families. Uh, the bikes provide them with reliable transportation for commuting to work, transporta, transporting product to market or accessing healthcare and other services. It's really a wonderful, uh, program. The, uh, it'll be at Council Rock North if I didn't say that from nine to twelve. And the last I heard, um, there's a couple hundred bikes that have been collected, so it's, uh, it's really neat. It's really, really neat. Uh, come out if you can.
I, I just, somebody mentioned it, but the Fall Festival is at the high schools this weekend. If you have a chance to stop by, they're open to everyone, um, and they're great events put on by the kids in the schools.
Awesome. All right, terrific. We'll see everybody on November fifth, I think, is the next meeting. So, in the meantime, Happy Halloween. Meeting adjourned.